The people that are present are myself, Myers, and Sherrick as part of the service committee. It says the service committee has called a special meeting for Wednesday, September 2nd, 2020, at 4:00 PM for the limited purpose of discussing water line expansion outside the city limits. I don't know who would like to start, Mr. Whitehead or Mr. McKeever? I don't know. I mean, the ball is in your court, so...
Well, I'll start it, but I'm actually going to turn it over to Lynn. But the other ones, you guys, everyone, stop looking because today afterwards, this is a map that Lynn created, I don't know how long ago, about expanding outside the city limits. Well, over the last couple of years, Nevada's been going through some water transition at their plant and what they're looking at in their future. Lynn's been talking to them. We went to a couple meetings, but we've had them in and we've met with them and they're at the point now where they've got to make a decision if they want to borrow money to build a new plant, or they want us to bring the water line to them. And then we met with RCAP, and I'll let Lynn take it from there because they came up with some ways to help fund it, so I'll let Lynn kind of hold the...
And RCAP, RCAP is what?
The Ruled Community Assistance Program of the Great Lakes area. They are an agency sponsored... Don't get me, quote me exactly on these, but basically, they help small villages, municipalities on how to acquire money for projects. And they are basically funded out of a lot of the agencies who provide loans and funding and they are a kind of quasi-government type entity themselves. And I have used them in other communities and they're very favorable to work with. So I mentioned something to Jeff and Jeff, the mayor, and we thought it would be good to bring the lady in. I just forgot her name. Jenny. Jenny. Yeah, I gotta watch. I got more than two of them. One's Jennifer, one's Pam. So this is Jennifer. And she, first of all, we weren't always allowed, their agencies are for small governments, typically under 10,000. And you're over that, but we were getting closer than the 14,000 or 13,433 we had eight years ago. And the fact was that Nevada needed assistance with their water and they're definitely in the small government size with, I don't know whether 1,000, somewhere around there. So I asked, can, if one entity helps the other entity that does qualify, can you help both entities? And she did some research and found out the magic word today is regionalization of facilities. And that is a good buzzword for getting funding that any time they could do away with a water plant or a sewer plant or some foreign entity, the word regionalization comes in and that's, I'll just say, bonus points. And we would qualify for that here because if the plan works for both municipalities, the city of Bussaras and the village of Nevada, if it's a win-win for both of them, then we got the regionalization. They would not need to rebuild or reconstruct their water treatment facilities, which is, was last done 20 years ago, I believe, so it's coming up. Things are getting tired. They know they're going to have to do some improvements. So it was, timing was good to look at this. The other magic buzzword is lead and copper, but that's not an issue with this program. Nevada does not have any lead service lines. There's, built in 1935 and it was all copper service lines. So lead's out, not on the table at this time. But they, so we had a meeting and because of the word regionalization, it opened up some doors and the lady from RCAP, we gave her an estimate of 1.5 million to run a water line from near Winford to within the city limits of the village of Nevada. And also Nevada has need for a water tower and some repair of a couple water lines in their distribution system. And we have a sheet here that says 750,000. We also threw another 100,000 onto that, but it doesn't show on this. There's more massaging that needs to be done, but we have to decide, you know, is it the wishes of Bussaras to move forward with this, that we can invest more time into it? And we need to come up with a number eventually of what the water bill would be monthly to Nevada. And then they have to decide, does that work for them? And so that is the work that's in progress, but we needed to get to this point to have an open discussion and there's going to be some numbers coming later. But presently, they have roughly 40,000 gallons a day of usage and we could easily accommodate that. And we would have five and a half miles to Nevada, I think it is, five and a half to the line. And we could actually pick up customers along the way. The plan presently would be the water line would be the cities and we would have all control over that. And we would pick up any of the additional customers and usage along the way. Nevada would, needs a new water tower. Their water tower is a 1935 water tower and they've been wanting it replaced for many years. They've done good maintenance on it, but it's, there's a limit to what you can do. And that's theirs and maybe they want another 100,000 for some internal water lines. They have one that's on 231, south end of town that breaks a few times in the winter and they need to get that. We've had a partial replacement of that, but they're saying if we're spending this much money and we're able to get some outside source funding, it would be a good time to maybe add that too. They have to make that decision. And so basically, you could get funding 50% to 100% for the water line.
A grant or a loan?
Grant, most of it, almost all of it, yes, forgiveness. And it's called principal forgiveness, is part of it. You know, we, actually, there will be a paper coming around that'll have, out of a million five for the city of Bussaras, you'll have 750,000 principal forgiveness, 375,000 OPWC grant, and then 375,000 0% interest 20-year loan. And Pam feels she can do better than that, but she can't guarantee it just yet because there is another CDVG competitive grant out there and she needs to look into that. We hated to say 100% just yet because, you know, there's some work to do, but she's very optimistic about the numbers. And out of the 750,000 that she has for Nevada for their water tower and some work that they were doing, they would have to pay back 75,000 of it at 20-years 0% interest loan and the rest would be granted.
If they were to rebuild their water plant, what, how many million cost they look at?
Estimated based on, I called the EPA and asked them of the prices of recent years of small villages. They gave me four or five and we were in the 1.75 to 2 million number. So, you know. But if they build that, you get $0. The only way with the principal forgiveness, and this happens, is if they consolidate. If they don't consolidate with us with this regionalization, which is the buzzword, if they don't do regionalization, then all this is off the table.
This almost sounds too good to be true.
I have seen things happen amazingly. In another community, something very similar has happened. A little less money, but it's still happening. So that's basically what we, we know we can do it physically. We have some rough budgets that need some, probably some more massaging, but it's in the ballpark and it's, we need to get very serious because some of the stuff with the OPWC has to be turned in two months, within two months.
County's got a question.
Got two questions for you. So looking at that 375,000 from the 20-year loan, probably 19,000 a year, where would that come from? Is that able?
Could be decided out of the year funds?
Can it come out of the enterprise funds for that or out of water or?
Yeah, it'd come out of the Water Works Fund.
Okay. And then the other 375,000 is OPWC grant. Would that be taking away any money that we would potentially have for another project or is this an addition to that?
You would probably not have your 185,000 that we've kind of got reason, accustomed to. I'm saying that would be this.
Potentially just for one year?
Yeah, I don't, yeah. And then? Maybe we'd go back to your 185. Because we need to talk to the county OPWC committee also and let them know we need to have them on board. I mean, there's stuff that's going to happen, but it's a good opportunity.
Our, where's your preliminarily route? Are you going through Osceola with that route?
No, it would go from there at Winford and take the Nevada-Winford road into Nevada.
But if Osceola wanted to get on later on, how far?
We have it set up on the map to come off and tee up Mary Milmore and go right into them and then come back and also service Foxfire.
Would there be bonus points going through Osceola from the beginning?
No. And actually, last year I was in Osceola on the septic systems. We had $300,000 grant through the county for septic systems and I, the word water line was brought up and we could have been asked to leave at the meeting at that point.
I just talked to one of their trustees in Todd Township over the weekend.
Yeah.
He said they want the water in Osceola.
All I'm going to say is, I was in a meeting and they did, we decided we were there dealing with the septic systems and that's what we were going to deal with.
Is this just strictly water?
Yes.
There's no sewage involved with the agreement?
This is a water line only.
And we would be the owner of the line and responsible for maintenance to up till what point?
We'll determine the actual point, but I'm saying it would probably get closer to the city limits of Nevada. Probably cross the county line and we could determine if we wanted to stop at the county line for a magical reason or go in, maybe actually before they get into their village limits, it's further in. But we're close in there and basically we just, is this something that council would feel we need to pursue? And are you on board? If you're not on board with all of it, then we don't want to waste a lot of people's time and efforts and Nevada needs to move on to Plan B.
Well, I'm having a private conversation with you already. I know I'm 100% on board. I mean, whatever we can do to get started and, you know, go full steam ahead. More water we sell, the more, more customers we get and maybe the price will come down as well. I mean, market share, it's all about market share.
Go ahead.
I didn't have any more.
So as we talk about price and we talk about Nevada, knowing if they're in or out to do it, they're doing some research on their end and they've got to look at their utility rates, their water rate to be qualified. They got to know what kind of rate are we going to be, one and a half outside the city? It's going to be the bulk rate and Mike's got numbers for you today. But it also factors in for them what they're, what we're going to charge them based off what their department can afford, because they still got some overhead billing, distribution lines and things like that. So they're, they're kind of want to know what council thinks of, are we just going to be one and a half their bulk rate? Or, but now if we change up for them, are we looking at all of our customers that are out of town? Which now plays a factor in our total overall income of that fund. So, I don't know, by Lynn did I miss it? No, no, that's, that's... So Mike, Mike's got some numbers for you if you want to look at them just to get an idea.
Sure. I'm sure there's a break even point or, I mean, it probably approaches real fast once you start adding all these customers in, but we could actually, if you're aware of that 50% surcharge.
Just for this project, for everywhere?
For everything. I mean, what we're doing is basically closing the door on, on other companies coming into our area as well by doing this type of thing, correct? Or at least helping close the door.
It would. The only thing that this does is it also affects our sewer fund if we do that. So, you know, because of the Timken subdivision. So that, that would cost us, and I'll let Mike put the paper with you to go with the numbers.
Okay. Like Lynn said, Nevada averages 40,000 gallons a day in the top line, the yellow. Average 40,000 gallon a day. At the one and a half times rate would be 123,000. If we changed it to the in-town rate, it'd be $82,000. So we'd take it, reduce it by $41,000 by going in-town. Blue line, that's what our customers that we service right now, that live outside the city limits, they're currently paying 164,706 dollars. If we would go to the in-town rate for those, it would be 190,000, which would be a $51,000 decrease. What'd I say?
Fifty-one, fifty-five.
Kansas City.
Yeah.
Fifty-five thousand.
That's number?
I flunked math. The decrease is 55,000, but we would make it up in water with the 82,000 in Nevada. The green line, that's the Bussaras out of town customers right now that we service that have sewer. They're paying right now 71,812 dollars. If we changed everything to the in-town rate, that would drop it down to 42,000 because sewer is double, but it's not half 71 because of the way the billing is. We'd take a $29,000 hit on the sewer line.
Mike, does the water and sewer go hand in hand at the one or one and a half rate? If you do it for one, you're in the mode?
Water's one and a half, sewer's two.
Okay. So if you reduce the water from one and a half to one, do you have to reduce the sewer or do you?
We don't have to, but it's, you know, that's your...
Nothing holds them together.
Right. Council decides on sewer rate, you know. So the orangish lines, Crawford County line, what we currently bill, that was roughly 117,000 for 2019. I figured out, all the customers that they gave me, Lynn would, the county would bill out at 143,829. If we took over the county water line down the road, it'd be 177,000 at the in-town rate or 118,000 at the in-town rate. You know, so if we went at the in-town rate and took over the county water line, they would get a decrease in their water bill.
If you took the sewer out though, you'd have to have 30,000.
What comes out to that?
You'd 30,000 more or 29,000 more if you add it back. So it wouldn't be 120, it would be, I read that right, it would be 118 plus 29,000. If you kept the sewer, like Kevin brought up, at the same rate?
Well, that's, this, that's just county water line, which, how do you figure in any sewer for that?
I should be figuring the sewer reduction in this final number though here or not?
No, that's just water for the county, not municipal. And then pink line is projected for the steps and road if we picked up 50 customers at minimum billing, what, what it would be the in-town and the out-of-town rate?
So the question I would ask them, does the rate have to be either one or the other? Can it be somewhere in between? It's not, I mean, I'm asking the council that, so.
Right.
That's a rhetorical question. It doesn't, doesn't have to be in-town rate, out-of-town rate? Or can council say, out-of-town rate is now 1.25 instead of 1.5? Or 1.1 or whatnot?
I ran something. I ran all these figures again at one and a quarter percent.
You have your way out there.
Yeah. If we, it was like, say Nevada, the top line, the yellow, at one and a quarter percent instead of the one and a half, it'd be 100,750.56 instead of then 82,000.
Can you just, can you tell us what the rate would be on the, like, one and a quarter? So netting on the water in-town rate, so.
Yeah, she's going to figure.
Would be 6,000 and a quarter more than that, right?
Yeah, it'd be, yeah, roughly a quarter percent more than that. Am I confused or not?
And then the question would be, what, what is the rate? What's the rate, comparative rate we need to have to be out there to expand our water service outside the area? What is the comparative rate that we need to do it in? And then the other question is, can it be phased down over time? So you start at one and a half and then the next year you can, just these are options, throw it out there. You can go, next year you go to 1.4, so after five years you're down to one, one to one. So that's another possibility, not to confuse the issue here, but there's a lot of options the council has.
One other option is?
I got Kevin right here.
I think what makes sense to me, in my mind, is though, falling to your guys' guise to, you know, talk to Nevada and negotiate with them. Find out where they're at with that. I mean, if they're able, if it makes sense to them to stay at the one and a half, because I think what, at the end of the day, I don't want to see us charging them different than what we're charging somebody else. Because if I was that somebody else, I'd be pretty ticked at that. So I think the starting point is negotiating a rate with them. Because if this project doesn't come to fruition, we're wasting a lot of time and calculator usage here. But negotiate a rate with them and then see how that would, that rate would affect us elsewhere through all of our customers makes the, makes the most sense.
Well, I can tell you with the meeting we had, Lynn, you can jump in here. They want to be on the same rate as the city.
They want an in-town rate.
Because what happens if they don't, where they got to raise their water rate, their utility rate right now in order to qualify for them to get the money they need to get, they got to raise it $2 now. So in order, and I would suggest they, or thought they would probably have to go another $5 if we keep them at the in-town or the out-of-town rate. Because there are clearance between paying us a month and when they got to have to operate their system, that $30 a month.
We need to make it welcoming to them, to, for them not to just decide to build a new plant. That's what you're saying.
Well, I don't know. I'll throw that to Lynn, but if they got to build a new plant, you're probably looking at that $20 a month for them, but I had no idea. Well, yeah, I'm not... I didn't figure that, but...
And are we the only option for them to purchase water?
There was looked at at one time when Nevada, when Upper Sandusky built their plant to pump a line to Nevada. The advantage we have is Nevada's downhill, so we don't need to pump. Upper Sandusky has to pump all the way uphill to get there and it adds considerable costs to the water. And it was decided not to do it at that time here, I forget, five, 10 years ago.
Upper made the decision.
Upper, yeah, when they built their new plant. And I just think that if we, you know, if we can figure out what that sweet spot is for them that's, you know, because I don't want to give it away to where we're going to lose our money. But, you know, if we can make, find an agreeable number, whether that's one, one and a quarter, one and a half, I think that negotiation should take place first. Come, come to a conclusion of what's going to make sense for them and see how that affects everything else.
What do you have, Karen?
How is our out-of-town rate compared to the Northern Ohio rate? Because I thought I looked at that once and their rate to people throughout Crawford County is very comparable to what our in-town people pay. So therefore, our 50% surcharge on top of that, we were way higher priced for out-of-town than what Northern Ohio was. So in theory, the more we can get our out-of-town rate down to what our in-town, in-town rate is, we will be making ourselves more competitive throughout the whole county. So if there's an option here that we can get our out-of-town rate down, it's going to be more of an advantage to us in other areas than just Nevada.
I got, I got Eric.
I was just, I mean, I know that, that we're looking at this one and one and a half percent and he was right. We really need to find out what they're paying and what their people are willing to pay different. I mean, no matter what, they know that getting in the building, they're going to have to pay more. But then if we're doing all this, and one of our biggest issues is the fact that everybody here is angry about their water bill. Isn't there a way to bring it down so that one of one and a half is still lower than what it is now for everybody? So, you know, if your water bill was $100 and we just took 10% off of all of it, 90, 90 is the one and one and a half, you know. I, I really think that if we're doing this, we've got to make sure that we're, we're able to help everybody, but we still need to figure out how we're going to help our own.
Are you talking about lowering the in-town rate in town here?
Yeah. If you're looking at one and, one and one and a half, if the in-town rate's even lower than it is right now, then it's still going to even out as if you've done one and a quarter elsewhere.
I don't think there's any wiggle room for the in-town rate to come down.
Yeah, we're barely breaking even.
We, Eric, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Karen, we, we had to build a new water plant, which is about $2 million a year, paying it back for another 17 years. We already paid almost three years off in 17 years. You know, council will have a good opportunity to look at that because we saved it two months. Right now, we, right now, we have over $4 million worth of obligations in that enterprise fund and that's about what we're bringing in for revenue right now. So there, there's, there's just no wiggle room on that, we'll have to go over the rates. If we lower them 10%, we're costing the city $400,000 and that's going to be made up somewhere. So our hands are kind of tied for 17 years because of the new plant.
Go ahead, Joey.
Volume is a thing. I mean, this is, we're going to lose 122,000 or even two if you depend on what rate. Because of the volume of Nevada, shouldn't we have, give them an in-town rate something?
Well, basically the same rate as what the county water line is, and they pay the one and a half times.
I think where you're big, county's the biggest water customer, you have to believe.
And Nevada's just a little bit more, not by much, but a little bit more.
If the county line's cheaper, what the county's charging them people running out Lincoln Highway is cheaper than what our out-of-town rate is, isn't it?
It's about the same rate Lynn's charging them by county.
Yeah, the county water line, we take your out-of-town rate, but we are fortunate enough to buy as a bulk user, so we get your tiered down.
Okay.
Which you use. Which then the, the county can add their overhead on to it and then charge the customers and still be in there, and I'm not sure just where we stand, because we take your rates, and when you needed to adjust them, then that adjusts it to, to the county, and then the county needs to adjust it to the customers, and we did a three-year type thing.
What if, what if Nevada paid the same as the county lines paying us, did you run that, are them numbers on here?
Yeah, that's.
That's these numbers.
The out-of-town rate.
The out-of-town rate is the same rate as the county is paying right now.
So, so the county's paying the out-of-town bulk rate?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And Nevada would be paying the same?
Right.
If we look.
Okay, I just.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Okay, go ahead and finish your, I think I've got a function like that, I'll hop in on you.
Uh, I just looked up on Rural Water, their minimum bill is for two thousand gallons of water. Their minimum bill is thirty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. At the in-town rate, ours would be two point six cubic feet. So we'd only bill them for two at the time, because we've billed to the nearest. But, yeah, two point six would be twenty-nine seventy-two, and the out-of-town rate would be forty-four eighty. But we'd actually only bill them for the two, because we've billed to the nearest hundred cubic feet, we don't go up, we don't go down. You know, if it's at six.
But the following month they'd get the extra.
Right, then and then.
Plus money accumulated, next unit.
So, you know, a minimum bill for in-town is twenty-two, twenty-two sixty-five. And a minimum bill for out-of-town is thirty-four eighty-six.
So we're actually.
So we're, we're competitive with what Rural Water. If you go by our minimums of.
Well, I don't.
In-town rate.
Uh-huh.
Either one. But we're, we're only two dollars more on what they're gonna bill than what it comes to.
I, I just, I think, again, I don't, try not to say the same thing over, but if, if they're gonna be amenable to the out-of-town bulk rate, and that's gonna be better than anything else they have, I think, you know, negotiate that and see where that goes. I, I think, we've set that rate for a reason. You know, we, we didn't set our rates to be extremely profitable, we set them to, to barely break even. And if we go ahead and reduce everybody's out-of-town rate from one and a half down to one, I think that puts us in danger of potentially having to raise our residents' water bills, and I don't want to put us in a position that's gonna do that, so I think, you know, yeah, we, we wanna sell as much as we can to everybody we can, but not, I don't want to cut off our, our, our nose despite our face here, I think, you know, seeing if that one and a half bulk rate for them will work is probably your next step.
I think the idea, you're gonna be very good point, I think the idea is to sell more water, uh, like Mr. Truppa said, to, um, to put up a wall, so we're the provider, and, and the third one would be to share the risk. Keep, by selling more water, we're actually lowering future rates for our city residents, I think it's gotta have all three things involved. And what we need to do is find that sweet rate that does all those things for us, and then in addition, makes Nevada happy, so. Does that, would that be, would that make sense?
Yeah, go ahead.
And Bruce disappeared.
Yeah.
Guy.
Yeah.
Are you to the point where you can negotiate that rate with them, or is that, are we still way away from that yet?
Well, before we do that, I'm gonna throw you another wrench, then you can tell which way you want to determine. Um, uh, about two weeks ago, roughly, we got approached by the county again. So, we're in the midst of talking about that, and gonna be bringing that to you. So, if you decide to do with Nevada, if we take over the county, then you better start thinking about what we're doing all the way to North Robinson, because if we keep Nevada at one and a half, and we hit New Washington, or, uh, all the people on the way out to thirty in North Robinson, we're gonna jump their water utility bill if we take it over, if you leave it the way it is today, is that a correct statement?
Well, but I think the difference there though is that.
No, you will, you will go over.
Right, but I'm saying if the county says, we don't want to do this anymore, we want you to take this over, you know, that's like when, you know, DirecTV goes out of business and you have to go to Spectrum, and your rate's different, I, I look at that a little differently, we're not, we're not making an initial charge on somebody different than what they're paying.
So you're gonna, you're gonna charge the village of Nevada the bulk rate out of town, and you're gonna jump the people in North Robinson, all the way out there, they're gonna go to two and a quarter.
So are they, do they have individual meters there?
Yeah.
So they wouldn't be eligible for a bulk rate that is the way it is, so I guess it's two different things, but.
That's, yeah.
I, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there, if you got no, they wanted to.
They're not gonna know the difference and understand the difference, they're gonna.
I'm having a tough time understanding the difference.
One thing, the way I look at it is, we're getting all these lines for nothing. We're, there's no, no initial investment on our behalf. I mean, if we were trying to build all this ourselves, oh my goodness.
Right. Well, if we take the cash system over, we have to maintain those lines that are already aged. Is that, is that.
They're nineteen ninety-six or newer.
Okay, I didn't know if that came into play at all.
Stetser Road would have won, they only accepted that, the proposed line on Stetser, we would be paying for that ourselves. So that rate, um, you know, if we're figuring the cost or a revenue versus the cost there, you know, that, that'll hopefully be a whole different equation now, at one versus one and a half, so that may change that. Those are all moving parts that we have here, so it's, you know, there's a lot of holes in the air, and.
I, I do know that the commissioner's desire to get out of the water and sewer business. And they're looking, that's why we have, uh, there's an agreement right now for years for the maintenance here, we, the city's provided the operations and maintenance for eighteen months now, or pretty close, and it's coming up for review. And they don't want to have to grow the system, they don't feel it's proper that we have another public utility entity growing when we have the service that could be provided better by the city or others. And, you know, so obviously, then it's becoming time to negotiate, talk about that again, and for the city to make a, a decision on whether they're wanting to acquire the line or not. Uh, the line is debt-free, there is funds in the treasury, so, you know, it, it is what it is, but, uh, one way or the other, they would like to see the county system acquired and operated and owned by another entity. So, as a better, more efficient way of doing it, and so, you know, if, if, that's a decision, so.
So if we don't take it, somebody will?
More than likely, yes.
Would that other entity be Northern Ohio Rural Water?
They're the closest.
It'd be a fool not to take it.
Would they take sewer and water if they did it?
Yes, sir.
So we, we gotta get that.
Initially, they had said no on the sewer. Uh, I think they have revisited that and figured it would be in their best interest to consider it. You have three small package plants, uh, small wastewater plants. Lynn Lair, uh, subdivision has forty-one homes on it. Morton subdivision at the edge of town here has twenty-four, I believe, and Sugar Grove is the other one, and that has twenty-four customers, again, I think, pretty close to that, that type of scale. And, uh, the Sugar Grove was built in ninety-six. Uh, Lynn Lair had a new plant put in and up in, I'm thinking nineties or something in there. Of course, the water line was ninety-five, ninety-six, and the water tower is the same vintage.
The, and the reason that the county line would be going to the two and a quarter if we don't change something is because, you, you said that, you said if we don't change it, they're going to two and a quarter with the way ours is set up now.
What's two and a quarter?
That's what you said.
I said that.
Yeah.
I said.
Is that because they would lose the bulk rate?
Yes.
Plus on top of that, they would get the.
One and a half.
One and a half times.
It's under the city limits.
Because right now there's a bulk master meter.
That goes through the county.
So their bulk master meter with the county adding their, it's still less than.
It's about the same as what we pay in town.
Okay.
So they would see a two and a quarter jump?
No, they would see about a point seven five jump. Because we pay about a penny and a half a gallon right now, and they would go to about two point two five, roughly.
Okay.
At the one and a half times the rate.
Right now, the county's roughly, but there's been some rate increases, and I did figure that in here, one county, didn't you get that rate increase?
Twenty, zero, zero, one.
Yeah.
One, six.
But basically, the county for a minimum bill for two thousand gallons is thirty-three dollars and ninety-two cents. At the out-of-town rate, it's forty-six dollars and six cents at our minimum bill.
What would a bill of four thousand gallons a month be? Do you, can you do that? That's an average, thirty-five hundred, four thousand gallons. I'm gonna say it's gonna be in a bunch of, it's three thousand to forty-five hundred, something like that. I don't like that minimum, because everybody's got a different minimum.
Sure.
And then we're getting a half, so you need to take two months' bill, one without the, and to get it, so.
Plus the consumption of four hundred cubic feet for the, or four thousand gallons, which is consumption of five hundred cubic feet on ours, fifty-seven dollars and forty cents.
In-town.
In-town rate. So at the county, that would be sixty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents. Or five times the out-of-town is eighty-six fifteen. So at the in-town rate, they would get a reduction, the county would, if we switched, took over the county line and billed everybody in-town rate. They would actually get a reduction in their bills if we took it over.
So at, and, and at the four thousand gallon consumption for the county ones, what wouldn't they pay Northern Ohio Rural Water? Because that's what they're gonna look at.
That's pull Rural Water up, given, I know, I know what your minimum bill is, I didn't look into rates after that. I know I paid Rural Water about thirty-nine dollars a month for about thirty-five hundred gallon water.
And we're thinking about charging them eighty?
No, he said sixty-seven or something, what, what he just said. So you said, who said thirty-five thousand gallons of water and about sixty-seven dollars?
Eleven, twenty, fifty-seven, forty.
That's the in-town rate, yeah. Well, we wanna be competitive, we're, we're trying to.
Rural Water's buying water cheaper than we can sell it for. That's. Then, yeah, then we can make it. If we figured that up, here's, you're gonna have to make it into Rural Water.
But their rates are gonna go too.
Yeah.
They're buying out of Sandusky.
Sandusky.
Yeah, those cities are gonna start raising their rates too, and it's, the green line, just a matter of time. They haven't used their rates.
So what are they?
Our rates are, as high as they're gonna be.
What they, what they need from us is, is a commitment that we're willing to go ahead and say, hey, give, give Lynn and Jeff, Jeff, the authority to sit down with them, with Nevada and, and move forward. I mean, if, we're, we're getting this line for free.
Right, I didn't know if that needed a motion, or if it was just a belief in our opinion.
I, I would say it would be a motion, I would think. What do you think?
It would be nice just to have it somewhere.
Like a resolution.
Yeah, whatever you need to do to say, you're endorsing this project and would like to see it come to fruition.
I'm in favor of it, I know.
Well, you're not on the committee.
If, when it goes to council, I'm in favor.
Just a formal vote, sign?
Yeah, an informal vote is a formal voting.
Okay, so you have a motion there?
No, he says, well, a motion for an informal vote.
A motion for an informal vote, then, what is the motion, okay.
To have an informal vote, whether we wanna grant them the ability to.
So do you vote yes or no? Okay, that must be a yes.
Yes.
Yes, and of course, I'm, I guess I'm not technically allowed to, but I'm saying yes.
Thank you.
And yes, you're allowed to, yes.
So this will go, come before, uh, this will come before council next, um, September eighteen, I think it is, for a full, a full council vote. It's, I don't think, September fifteenth.
I don't really need that.
I, I don't think we need that, well.
We're gonna have to get numbers and get a final.
And what about OPWC, we gotta have, sometime, we'll have a resolution for that.
Yeah.
That'd be a finance.
But, and we're supposed to have some find your tune numbers and, uh, estimates, and I got, we got forms to fill out. But the main thing is, you know, it has to happen fast when it gets there, you know? And.
Well, I think everybody that is here is, is more than, go ahead, I'm sorry.
While you're here, what's the project, what's the progress on Stetser, because I have five people that I work with that live on Stephanie Drive that are asking, how soon and how.
And I talked to a commissioner, too.
Okay.
We have to probably wait until the MISO, that's.
We have the plan sheets put together on.
Well, this is outside, outside.
We're good, okay.
This is outside water, so, sorry.
Okay. Good job, Todd. The, uh, the State Route ninety-eight water line is ninety-nine percent complete. We're gonna send it in to, ODOT has to review it, and then EPA has to bless it, and we can put it out to bid. Here another thirty, forty-five days. And then we can get it, and I've actually talked to a few contractors already, and they're very interested. So, but we need to have the blessing of both those state agencies. In the meantime, while we're getting the agency's approval on the ninety-eight water line, we'll be finishing the plan and profile sheets on Stetser Road. I have already talked to the county engineer briefly about it, because we have to get his blessing of where we decided to put it, uh, for construction purposes, but it's the county's right of way, so it needs to get his review and blessing on what we're proposing also, and that's courtesy and proper protocol, you know, on that. And that's, and we'll get a permit from him to put it in according to the plans, and we'll get then, with his blessing that it's okay where we're positioning it, that'll get sent to EPA, and you'll have another thirty to forty-five days there before it comes back, so the Stetser Road water line, Drifflay Mark, I feel, you're probably into the year before we're getting our approvals and it would be ready to go first thing in the spring.
So you're saying somewhere around end of February, first of March?
Yeah, I would say that we could kind of, we have the approval, uh, typically after January, uh, we put it out to bid, they bid it in February, March. And then as soon as the weather breaks, they can get it, and by, you know, into the summer, we've got water out there. But I, yeah, that's, that's where we're at, we're trying to get that one done.
If everything flows, fall by Nevada or get Nevada up and running?
Of next year. Of next year?
Definitely take months.
Late fall. Late, late fall, see, the OPWC money will not come available until July of twenty-twenty-one. Uh, so we, we won't start having, you would have, the city would have to advance in engineering. And then, which is done quite often if you want to. And sometimes we're not allowed to start until after the money is received from OPWC, I was thinking there, sorry. Because you wouldn't have to put any upfront. If we wait until the OPWC and that money comes, and it's going to be grant that the monthly bills that come in for a project are reviewed, approved, signed off by the city, sent to OPWC, and they mail the checks back. Uh, sometimes if the project, uh, we're trying to get a jump start, we know it's gonna happen, you know you're getting your money. Uh, a public entity could front the engineering cost. And then when the contract is signed between OPWC and the city of Usharist, then the following month, you could send all those past bills that you paid in and get reimbursed. So that's, we've done both ways.
And CDBG won't be available until September twenty-one, right? Get from the law.
I'm, I'm not sure of that date.
But that's what I wrote.
Oh, okay, well then that's the right date. So, and, and it's when this, all this money does come available. It's, and there are different periods by a few months sometimes. That's what helps when you have Jen from Archap leading it and putting it all together. Cause she knows all the ins and outs and the rules and it's just, uh, better to have that. But yeah, you're still another year away for Nevada.
Chris, I have one more question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, one last, uh, one last question I have for you, the right-of-way, since you mentioned it, do we already know the right-of-way going to Nevada? Is that all county or is it gonna have to be a B.C. period?
That's all county.
Okay.
Except where we go underneath the four-lane thirty.
Okay.
And we've not had a problem, there's just procedures and protocols.
But you don't see, you don't see any huge obstacles with that.
Good deal.
How big a line is it running into?
Six inch really is all they need, because you're not doing the fire protection flows. They have a water tower, Nevada will get their fire protection and pressure off of the water tower. And so that if they have a big surge, it'll come out of the tower and into their line. When we fill their water tower, when their water tower is full at whatever, eighty thousand, let's just say a hundred thousand, it's round number, gallons, and then they drop down to maybe forty, fifty thousand gallons before a valve will open and let our water pressure fill their, their, pressurize their lines and fill their tower back up. When it gets up, the valve will shut off electronically, and then they'll be operating off the rest of the day off of their water tower. And we figured on, I, I, I can't quote the right number, but it's somewhere hundred fifty, two hundred gallons a minute to go back into the Nevada system when the valve opens up to fill their water tower.
I just wondered if that six-inch line could take a lot of auxiliary feeders going down township roads and stuff?
We, we have it in a model and was calculating the loads that you can have come out. I mean, you're coming out of a house, I have thirty homes in a community. I have a water meter that can measure a gallon a minute flow. The majority of the time that I go in, it is two, three, five, six gallons a minute. If I walk in to that community of thirty homes and I see fifteen gallon a minute flowing through, I gotta leak somewhere. That's real world. You know, your, your factory that's out here use ten thousand gallons a day or some small amount like that. That's, well, you get fourteen hundred and forty minutes in a day, so five, ten gallon a minute, you know, whatever that number works out to, the math. You know, it doesn't take, but fire protection is what uses the capacity in the line. Rural Water's running two-inch lines, three-inch lines, four-inch lines.
I'm just thinking for future, if we get more, a community might, like, maybe wind out and wanna have a line running down there, running off this thing.
And, and you probably, you still have enough for hydraulic, if we lose the pressure, you're gonna do, probably put an intermediate booster pump in like they, uh, they did down at Edison. There's a booster pump north of Edison that pumps water diaphragm.
Would you need to have a booster pump to be able to put any hydrants along the route out to Nevada?
You would. No, we will have hydrants for flushing purposes. They will not be thousand gallon a minute hybrids. If you want a thousand gallon a minute, you're gonna go to a twelve-inch line.
Could they do a five hundred gallon a minute?
Rural Water's about three fifty.
Yeah.
You know, the hydrants we have in Chatfield, you can hook up to them, you know, three hundred fifty gallon fill pumps better than having to hook everything up and do suction. You know, but thousand gallon.
I would not, you can't afford to run the lines for fire protection, in my opinion. And the second issue to that is trihalomethanes and alucetic acids. That is the biggest thing that we worry about in testing right now. It's a cancer-causing agent in the water caused by chlorine in the system that we're required to do for disinfection. The biggest problem that is having oversized lines when long detention times in your water. And the smaller you can have a line, the faster the water's going to turn over in that line, and it won't lay there. Next door, there's a twelve-inch water line out in the country, and they flush more water on the ground than they sell to keep the water fresh right now because the use wasn't as predicted ten years ago. And we have to, and ten years ago, truthfully, we weren't worried so much about that chemical, the trihalomethanes.
When you say next door, is that in gallon?
Could be, yeah.
Tell me what, what happens to the inspection, isn't there like an inspection, uh, spot or something up at Woodford?
Inspection spot?
Like, like a inspect, there was some type of testing or something, uh.
We've got fire hydrants, we've.
No, no, they're, they're, they're counting things, we started out.
See, it's really nice when the schools opened up because then they have turnover in that twelve-inch line running to the two miles. And it was also when, I believe the city agreed to let Woodford have that, that they shut off their wells and use city water to water their fields in the summer so that you could then in the summer use that water and that would freshen up the water in the line. And it was worth it to them to have the fire protection for their school. But anymore when we design water lines, I like to have the water department and the fire department in the same table so that they, we can duke it out, so to speak, and they understand each other's concerns. And what a big line is great for maybe an ISO rating, although I, I don't know how much an ISO rating saves me on my house insurance. I, I have yet to find a chart for that. But it also creates a water quality issue for the distribution department and have to keep flushing lots. One of the reasons we flush lines all the time is to freshen up the water and plus clean the lines out. But there's millions of gallons in that process. So if we can minimize that, then that's less water that was produced at the plant that didn't get sold through a meter.
Yeah, it went from a five to a three, I saw several homes take about twelve percent deduction in their home insurance.
All right, that's, yeah, I would, uh, adhere to the, so twelve percent of what's a.
Roughly a thousand bucks a year, you're earning a hundred and twenty bucks off of it.
Yeah. So, is it worth eighty bucks a foot for a pipeline to save a hundred and twenty bucks a year on the house? Insurance, we're not talking.
Up your rates.
It's a risk.
Because the water rates go up, cause you gotta cover the expense.
Yeah.
It's kind of.
I have, you know, like I said, I got two-inch water line running sixty-two lots. We run a two-inch line in a hundred and twenty campground sites.
Well, could, could this, uh, how many customers in Nevada, four hundred?
Well, there's, there's more than that, I think five twenty-nine or something like, I forget what it was, but yeah.
But would that six-inch line do twice that many people if?
Yeah, I, I figured at, uh, a hundred fifty, two hundred, well, two hundred gallon, I knew I should have brought the calculator. Here, just a minute, I'll flip you that. I'm gonna figure it out and turn it off. Forty thousand gallons a day. Probably, well, I thought two, two hundred. It's two hundred minutes divided by six. We would supply them waters three hours a day. What it's six, would take to replenish their supply every day in three hours coming out of the six-inch slump, we can do that. I, I had said to me, it's fire protection that demands big lines. Rural Water does not provide basically fire protection. They've got something that comes out of their hydrants that was convenient in their design.
They call it flushing.
Yeah.
For them to flush, but we can use them to fill a tank, but you cannot pump off any fire.
And the fire department, it, it's a concern. Adrenaline's running, you got a house on fire, you're trying to save it. You open it up and draw everything that line's got. It's just gonna happen, and then they're gonna turn it off and the cookie goes shut and it loses line with water hammer. I've seen it happen, I had to refix a line in Nevada once and that happened. But that's the, you need to limit the draw on a hydrant to what the water company says you can draw it. Not what you can suck and pull and, or you'll suck it dry, and that's happened.
Well, with the fire in New Washington and one in Chatfield, they drained the water tower in New Washington because they only keep it half full.
Yeah.
They drained it twice with the brass fire and the house fire in Chatfield. I mean, they drained it to where I couldn't use water at home because there wasn't any.
And part of the reason that the water towers can't remain full is trihalomethane and alucetic acid. I do it with the North Robinson water tower. I have to lower it or I flunk EPA tests.
Yeah, we, we go out and get samples every.
Yeah, the, the city's not doing that under our maintenance agreement.
Well, how, how bad a shape is their water plant over there?
What, Nevada?
Yeah.
It's twenty years old.
But I mean, are they facing?
They know it's coming. I, I, I truthfully can't tell you, is it a fifty percent, a sixty percent, an eighty percent, I can't tell you.
They don't.
I'm not running it.
They don't have the money to do it.
They don't wanna be like.
But if they, if they had to replace that plant, their, their water bill's gonna skyrocket over there.
Or do they find another pot of money for some hardship case, I don't know. Or do they pay for forty years, that's what usually USDA can give them forty-year loans, thirty-nine-year loans, ones for construction. And then you get a interest, constructed interest grant from OPWC, which covers a hundred thousand dollars for them or something like that. And, but I, I'm not gonna sit here and say it's exactly to, I know it's gotta be in that area based on four or five other water plants of comparable size in the last five, six years. I called EPA and had a gentleman send me some inquiry, you know, numbers and I looked at that.
All right, well, I thank you, everybody, uh, we accomplished what we came here for. So, I guess I need a motion to adjourn.
Want you to adjourn?
Second.
On paper, so, all right, okay, I wanna adjourn that, whatever the top seven is.
I will.